I'd like to call the May 4th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business is invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight and their deliberations, and grant them knowledge and guidance as they look upon the responsibilities that are before them. Father, during this pandemic, we pray especially for healthcare workers and for everyone working hard to protect our citizens. For our vulnerable populations, God, we pray that they are receiving the necessary support and care. Please be with those serving our country, our law enforcement officers, and our first responders. May your blessings be upon us always. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen.
Now our pledge of allegiance by county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Manager. Thank you for coming today. Commissioners, please hold your comments and questions until individually called upon. When voting on an agenda item, Commissioners shall announce their vote and raise their hand to indicate their vote. Comments during the public comment period shall be limited to three minutes each and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control over. Please, public comment is intended to require the Board to answer, is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or a candidacy shall not be permitted. I would now ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. Commissioner Buchanan.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion amend the agenda to include item 4A, general items, E, regional, the regional letter to Governor Cooper.
Second, I have a second on that.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye, raise your hand, aye. All opposed? Do we have somebody that was opposed?
No, but I got a question.
Okay, all right, we've got a discussion.
Just going over this letter, I mean, I'm concerned about, as everybody else is, I know that we need to get our businesses back online as soon as possible compared to the rest of the state, but what I'm really afraid of is a possible spike of positives coming back if we start opening up too soon. But again, I do understand the need to get back, to get our businesses back on track, and I guess we can discuss this later towards the end of the meeting, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be up for discussion and the item when it comes up on the agenda.
Okay, all right, I'll hold my comments till then.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Buchanan.
I'd like to make a motion approve the agenda as amended.
Oh, a second. All in favor of a motion to amend the agenda signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
So we have a unanimous vote. Now I'd like a motion to adopt the meeting agenda that's as amended, if we hadn't done that already.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
Second, all in favor of adopting the agenda as amended signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Robin didn't, I didn't see your hand.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't know how to do this like this.
Okay, does, does any Commissioner have anything to remove from the consent agenda for discussion at the end of the meeting? Here, hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion and a second. I think a motion made by Mr. Shanahan and a second by Mr. Bennett. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous vote. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll now move on to item number three, which is a public comment section, and I'll refer that to manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, our public comment was opened downstairs at the government center for anyone who wanted to come in, in a small group, one by one, to speak to the Zoom video and to be part of this. And we have just checked, and at this time, no one has signed up for the public comment period.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Russell. We will now move on to item 4A. I'll turn that over to you also, Ms. Russell.
Thank you so much, Chairman Bright and Commissioners. Our first general item is a contract that we are accepting or asking you to consider accepting some grant funds. Onslow County EMS strives to transport all behavioral patients to the most appropriate destination for treatment regardless of their ability to pay. Trillium Health Resources has received funding to reimburse Onslow County EMS for transports not otherwise reimbursable through insurance. This program will allow us to receive a fixed payment for services provided by Onslow County EMS paramedics, EMTs, and community paramedics. The program, if we accept it, will reimburse us up to $12,500 per year. This funding was received recently, or the, the offer of funding from Trillium Health Resources, and it is to cover eligible transports during the fiscal year 2019, 2020, so our current year. We respectfully request that all of you consider approving this Trillium Health Resources grant with Onslow County EMS, and if approved, authorize Chairman Bright to sign on behalf of the Board.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Russell. I need a motion to approve the request.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Royce Bennett. I hear a second, second by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll move on, Ms. Russell, to county-owned crash truck, item B. Refer that to county manager, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chairman Bright and Commissioners. This item regards the, what we're going to do with the crash trucks since the rescue squads were closed last year and some have been merged into other departments. Onslow County previously partnered with local volunteer rescue squads to purchase crash and rescue vehicles, which we call crash trucks. The crash truck that was assigned to Richland, Richland's EMS and Rescue, which was a 2003 Ford F-650, was jointly titled between Onslow County and Richland's EMS and Rescue. Richland's EMS and Rescue has merged with Comfort Fire and EMS in Jones County effective in 2019. Comfort Fire and EMS, who now owns the Richlands portion of the truck, has offered $13,000 to Onslow County to buy us out of our ownership interest in the crash truck. The crash truck has been evaluated by Onslow County Vehicle Maintenance, and vehicle maintenance recommends acceptance of this offer of $13,000 as a fair estimate of half of the vehicle's current value. The Fire Rescue Commission has also considered this issue and approves this recommendation. Onslow County Emergency Services is hereby asking that the county accept the offer from Comfort Fire and EMS for its interest in the crash truck and convey the title to Comfort Fire and EMS. So we respectfully, we respectfully ask all of you to consider making the offer of $13,000 for the county's interest, or accepting the offer of $13,000 for the county's interest in the 2003 Ford F-650, and if approved, authorize our staff to execute the documents necessary to complete the sale.
Need a motion from the Board?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shanahan. Do I hear a second? I hear, I hear a second from Commissioner Foster. Any discussion?
Question. Ms. Russell, is the, is the, is the value include the, the contents, the equipment on the truck and everything, and total $26,000?
I don't think there was a, a significant amount of, of equipment, certainly not current equipment. There were, there were probably modifications to the truck back in 2003 to enable it to be used as a crash truck, but our vehicle maintenance folks felt, and, and Fire Rescue Commission believed that $13,000 for the county's portion was a very generous and fair offer.
No.
Any further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item D, I'm sorry, item C, Central Carolina Holding Contract Amendment. Ben Warren, I think that's yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The solid waste department provides tire recycling for residential and commercial customers throughout the county. The service does require a contract with Central Carolina Holdings for tire hauling and disposal services. At the start of this fiscal year, it was estimated that our cost for this service was going to be about $260,000, and there's been an unexpected increase in tire disposals throughout the year, which has driven that cost up to an estimated $325,000 by year's end. We do receive a portion of the funding for this service through the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and with this increase, our staff are planning to request an overrun grant to help cover this anticipated cost increase. And so at this time, we respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the proposed amendment to the tire hauling and disposable contract, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Gentlemen, I need a, need a motion for the recommended action.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Buchanan and Commissioner Shanahan. Any discussion on that item? Yes, yes, Commissioner Price.
I was just wondering about the overrun grant. Do they routinely approve these requests, or is it, you just got to fill out the paperwork, or what's the deal?
Yes, sir. It's, it's fairly routine to apply for the overrun grants in situations like this. The unfortunate thing is that oftentimes it has not covered the entire cost, so the county will have to use some of our other revenues to, to cover the remainder of the cost.
Somebody else have a question?
No, I just.
Ben, Ben, does, does this funding for this, if we have to use any, come out of the solid waste enterprise fund?
Yes, sir, it does.
So it don't really come out of the general fund?
No, sir, there would be no general fund expenditures to cover the cost of this service.
Okay. Commissioner Napp.
It has nothing to do with what Ben proposed. I'm just letting you know that there's a delay in my, my feed. It's freezing up, so I may not hear all of what you're saying, or you may not be able to hear me. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Well, we'll give you time to respond, and if you put your hand up, we'll know something, that you need some attention there. Okay, we'll move on to item D, which is COVID-19 crisis response. The, Ms. Sherri Slater, our Assistant County Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have this evening before you the AA 619 COVID-19 Crisis Response Funding. This funding is to help the Onslow County Health Department to continue to provide services such as prevention, preparing for and responding to the coronavirus disease 2019. The funding helps support public health activities such as surveillance, epidemiology, laboratory capacity, infection control mitigation, communications, and other preparedness and response activities. As you may have noticed during this event, we've used a lot of non-traditional as well as traditional ways of getting information out to the public. We've done a lot of Facebook, opening the Citizen Phone Bank, things like that, trying to make sure that we're reaching all of those high-risk populations, doing a lot of direct contact with folks in different types of facilities, things like that. The funding that's been allocated through this act to Onslow County is $143,221, and we would respectfully request that the Board consider approval of the AA 619 COVID-19 Crisis Response Funding, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Need a motion to approve the item on the agenda D. Have a, have a motion.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any, any discussion? Commissioner Napp.
Sure, I got a quick question for you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this, this COVID-19 Crisis Response Funding, let me ask you seriously, would we qualify this if we were not in a state of emergency?
Sir, I don't know the answer to that. I believe that this is funding that came down through, I know that it's funding that came down through the Department of Public Health. I do not know for sure what the premise for it was, so I don't, I don't know whether or not that was a qualifying factor. I don't believe they asked us that, but I also knew the state would have that information regardless.
I would think that this COVID-19, since it was a state of emergency declared, that since we are in a state of emergency, and they know that, that that's the reason why, I'm just assuming that's the reason why they approved this funding, because it is special funding. Is there any way you can find that out for me, please?
Certainly, be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Is this, Sherri, is this where the contact tracing, is this going to help pay for those individuals that are conducting the contact tracing and all that?
It is, this is money for local efforts, and yes, it will help us pay for that part of the service. I think you might also be referring to the governor has intention of supporting contact tracing from a statewide level, and that is different funding, to my understanding.
Any, any further? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section E is the add-on that we amended the agenda, is a regional letter to Governor Cooper to allow the six counties that wanted to partner, wanted us to partner with them to send a letter to Governor Cooper to allow the counties to act on their own, to start the reopening process, if there is any. And I will refer to our county manager, Ms. Russell, to read the letter, and then we'll have a motion, and then we'll discuss it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As Mr. Chairman stated, through the leadership of this Board and in conjunction with, and speaking with county managers from Beaufort County, Carteret County, Craven County, Jones County, Lenore County, Pamlico County, and Wayne County, a joint letter to the governor has been created, and this is up for your consideration this evening, if you would like for Chairman Bright to sign on behalf of this Board. And I will now read the letter into the record. To the Honorable Roy Cooper, North Carolina Office of the Governor, 20301 Mail Service Center, Raleigh, North Carolina. Dear Governor Cooper, this letter serves to represent the desire of a group of counties in central eastern North Carolina to reopen our local county economies to avoid any further damaging effects caused by Executive Orders 121 and 135. We appreciate your leadership thus far related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Many of the decisions you have made saved lives and helped flatten the curve in North Carolina. Like you, we have had to make difficult decisions that have been challenging and have changed the lives drastically for many of our citizens. These orders have placed an extreme economic hardship on our local county economies. We no longer can sit idle, as these orders cause vast economic despair and irreparable harm to our small businesses and citizens. As a region, we ask that you authorize local control of decision-making in regards to a phased reopening approach to local county governments. We know this is the best methodology to ensure that local data, metrics, and expertise are used in local decision-making. We request that you repeal Executive Order 135, better known as the Stay-at-Home Order, and the subsequent phased reopening approach, and allow local county governments to individually determine the process and timing of any needed local restrictions. Eastern North Carolina has faced significant challenges over the last four years as a result of devastating hurricanes that have caused personal property, property loss and strain on our local economies. Hurricanes Matthew, Florence, and Dorian changed fundamentally how our local economies function. Each of our counties has seen small businesses fail, citizens lose their jobs, and families struggle to make ends meet. We continue to work in partnership with the State of North Carolina to rebuild our communities after these disasters. To this day, each of our counties is still challenged with finding normal, normalcy in our local economies and the massive task of achieving long-term recovery. We have worked collaboratively with the State of North Carolina in a manner where local government input and citizen input was valued, and helped develop the direction for which we create a recovery plan. County governments have always been a partner in these discussions and served as the front line for local recovery initiatives. We are asking that the State of North Carolina and county governments follow that same process as we begin the reopening of local county economies. County governments have worked in unison with the State of North Carolina, just like in times of natural disaster, to help flatten the curve and slow the spread of COVID-19. Counties have served on the front line as our public health departments take on the responsibility of testing, contact tracing, and caring for the sick during this pandemic. Our local data collection and ability to interpret such is the key to understanding the timing of when our local economies can begin to reopen in a safe manner. We all recognize that certain restrictions must remain in place to ensure that our local counties remain focused on slowing the transmission of COVID-19. We, however, feel those restriction decisions should be made at the local county level. Local county governments would continue to seek consultation with our local hospitals, local health authorities, and state health experts to make educated decisions in regards to reopening. As local elected leaders, we take these decisions seriously, and would use all the tools and information available to protect our citizens and vulnerable populations, and at the same time, restore the economic, the economic health of our counties. We come with one voice to defend our local businesses, industries, and the overall economic well-being of our citizens. Our goal is simply to request local authority of decision-making and avoid being grouped in a broad-based statewide decision-making model. Our rural geography and low population density should not be lumped together with much larger, larger urban counties that face very different challenges. We all agree that the most recent data clearly reflects that the curve in central eastern North Carolina has flattened, and that our timing for reopening should be much sooner than other parts of North Carolina. Our region of North Carolina is unique, and our county's very diverse, but we all agree that the challenges facing the Triangle, Triad, or Charlotte regions of North Carolina are greatly different than that of central eastern North Carolina. By allowing for local authority, you are allowing parts of North Carolina to move forward towards regaining losses in our economies and not hindering our long-term recovery efforts, not only from COVID-19, but the devastating hurricanes which have affected our region. We want eastern North Carolina to prosper again, and to do so, we need your help. By empowering county governments with decision-making authority to make determinations locally to reopen our economies, we can bring some normalcy back to our citizens. Additionally, we, we request that you communicate with the local county leaders in our region to further address our concerns. With regards, Jerry Evans, Chairman, Beaufort County Board of Commissioners, Bill Smith, Chairman, Carteret County Board of Commissioners, Thomas Mark, Chairman, Craven County Board of Commissioners, Frank Emery, Chairman, Jones County Board of Commissioners, Linda Rouse Sutton, Chairman, Lenore County Board of Commissioners, Jack Bright, Chairman, Onslow County Board of Commissioners, Pat Prescott, Chairman, Pamlico County Board of Commissioners, and Ray Mayo, Chairman, Wayne County Board of Commissioners. At this time, this item is available for the Commissioners to consider and discuss. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a approval, a second by Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Foster. I think both of you put your hands up at the same time. I will now open the, the item up for discussion, and I've, I've got a question for Ms. Russell. I don't know if you'll be able to answer it or not, but if, if we approve this letter tonight, and one of the other counties does not approve it, does that stop the letter from going in, or, or does it still go in without that signature?
My understanding is that it would go to the governor without that signature. So if one of the eight boards does not approve this, then there would just be seven counties that would join, for example.
And, and as this, this is very similar to what we did with a letter earlier on, and also mirrors the resolution that we did and sent in. I'm, I'm assuming it's pretty much the same language, maybe wrote a different way?
Yes, sir. It's, it's some of the same themes, and talking about how eastern North Carolina might be different from other areas of the state, but it, I think it takes a slightly different approach, and it joins us with the other counties in our region.
And our, our legal, our legal advisor and our county attorney has reviewed this and made the recommendations that it come before the Board for a vote.
Yes, sir. Our county attorney, Brett DeSelm, did review this letter and did not have any specific legal concerns about the letter.
Okay, I'll open it up now for discussions. Commissioner Bennett.
Ms. Russell, on the off chance that our governor would approve of our request, I know the Health Department and you have been working on a plan to phase in a reopening. Is that, is that ready to go so that we could do something in a, in a, in a phased-in, logical, safe manner?
Yes, sir. We're very close to being able to push go on that. We have preliminary plans outlined. We have worked with the Health Department, Environmental Services, law enforcement, emergency management, and our municipalities. We've had conversations with City of Jacksonville in particular about how that progression would look, and we have had public health look at those recommendations of how we would propose phasing those, those businesses back in. An example, Commissioner Bennett, would be that restaurants might be able to open up outdoor seating that's well-spaced out as an initial step, and it might not be immediately that we would have all of the interior dining opened up, but they could start out with outdoor seating. That plan also looks at the recommendation for using masks and, and other sanitizing steps. We also have a pretty comprehensive outline of how to open up our internal government facilities. So these are things that we've been working on, and we will collaborate. and we will collaborate if we're given this responsibility. We will collaborate with all of you and then with our municipalities and the base and be able to have something fairly quickly that we can roll out.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to item. This is appointments. Child Protection and Child Fatality Review Team. I'll turn that over to Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I believe that this is an appointment for our Child Protection and Child Fatality Review Team. And we have several applicants for this. This particular appointment did not require any votes. You did not receive a ballot for this one. The Community Child Protection and Child Fatality Prevention Team reviews records of all fatalities of Onslow County children as well as any cases that may be receiving child protective services in which there may be gaps in the service delivery from any county agency. All of the cases are reviewed to determine what, if any, improvements can be made within our community as well as how to provide services for our child population. The following have submitted citizen participation applications for appointment to these categorical positions in the Child Protection and Child Fatality Review Team. Mr. David Grovedahl in the category of EMS has applied for the term expiring June 30, 2021. Ms. Julia Parrish in the category of Law Enforcement has also applied for that same term ending in June 30, 2021. And Mr. Brian Kelly has applied for appointment to the Fire position. And also that is a one-year term expiring on June 30, 2021. All of these applications are on file, have been certified by the Clerk's Office, and we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment now of Mr. David Grovedahl for EMS, Ms. Julia Parrish for Law Enforcement, and Mr. Brian Kelly for the Fire position for a one-year term expiring on June 30, 2021.
Okay, gentlemen, I need a motion to approve the appointments.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Shanahan made a motion. Commissioner Price made a second. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hear none? All in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Next appointment is Animal Service Advisory Committee under Section B. Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This next appointment or set of appointments is to the Animal Services Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee is composed of seven members appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners and serves at the pleasure of the board. The Advisory Committee was created to advise the Onslow County Animal Services Director with respect to animal service matters. The following members' terms have expired and they have expressed a willingness to continue serving on the committee. Each member has provided a citizen participation application for consideration. The applicants are Dr. Robert Shigog, seat number one, for a three-year term; Ms. Toni O'Neill, seat number two, for a three-year term; Ms. Mary Ann Fassbender, number three, for three years; Ms. Amanda Rocker, seat number four, for three years; and Ms. Sue Tuman, seat number seven, for three years. All of these terms are expiring on May 16, 2023. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. At this time, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the reappointment of Dr. Robert Shigog, seat number one, Ms. Toni O'Neill, seat number two, Ms. Mary Ann Fassbender, seat number three, Ms. Amanda Rocker, seat number four, and Ms. Sue Tuman, seat number seven, for a three-year term expiring May 16, 2023.
Motion to accept the applicants.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Bennett. Did a seahoseca by Commissioner Price. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. Section C is the Onslow County Motor Vehicle Board. Refer that to County Manager Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The Motor Vehicle Valuation Board consists of three members who are available to address and resolve motor vehicle valuation appeals. Taxpayers are afforded a period of 30 days from the due date on their combined registration tax notice to request an appeal. The initial review is conducted by the Tax Office staff. If the taxpayer disagrees with the results of the Tax Office review, the taxpayer is referred to the Motor Vehicle Valuation Board as the second level of appeal. Decisions made by the local Motor Vehicle Valuation Board may be appealed to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. The current term for the Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Board expires on May 2, 2020. Mr. Gary Lankas, Mr. George Bill Hitt, and Mr. Robbie Yates have all expressed a desire to continue serving on the board through the next term. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. We respectfully ask you to consider the reappointment of Mr. Gary Lankas, Mr. George Hitt, and Mr. Robbie Yates to the Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Board for the next term, beginning May 3, 2020 and ending May 2, 2021.
Okay, gentlemen, I have a motion to accept the applicants. A motion by Commissioner Foster. I hear a second by Commissioner Shanahan. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor of the motion for appointment of the Motor Vehicle Advisory Board signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the Fire Rescue Commission under Section D. I believe that's County Managers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Our next appointments are for the Fire Rescue Commission. The Onslow County Fire Rescue Commission was created by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners to oversee the volunteer fire departments and rescue squads in the county. The commission is comprised of three members from the fire service, three members from the rescue service, the Director of Emergency Services, the Onslow County Finance Director, a County Commissioner, a licensed insurance agent, and a member-at-large who does not have a connection to any fire department or rescue squad. Mr. Anthony Prince has expressed an interest in reappointment to seat number seven at large and has provided a citizen participation application. The Onslow County Fire Chiefs of the fire departments met and nominated the following individuals to consider for seat three. Volunteer fire department category, number one, Mr. Ricky Hardison, and number two, Mr. Brandon Longo. Ballots have been prepared to the board for convenience. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. And at this time, I will look at the ballots that you have all filled out and signed. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. Ricky Hardison received seven votes. And so he is unanimously selected by the Board of Commissioners to serve that two-year term, which will be expiring March 7, 2022. And at this time, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Anthony Prince in seat number seven, Citizen-at-Large category, and consider appointing Mr. Ricky Hardison to seat number three for the Fire category for remaining two-year term expiring on March 7, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Buchanan made a motion. Commissioner Knapp seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
I have not.
Got a unanimous vote. Thank you, gentlemen. The next appointment is Onslow County Board of Adjustment. And I'll refer that also to County Manager Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And I will add for the the election that we just did for that Fire Rescue Commission seat and for the one I'm about to talk about, these ballots are available for public view. And if anyone is interested in reviewing the ballots, they should contact our clerk to the board, Ms. Julie Wond. Our last appointment is for the Onslow County Board of Adjustment. The Onslow County Board of Adjustment is governed by the terms of the Onslow County Zoning Ordinance and North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A-345. All members of the board shall thoroughly familiarize themselves with the laws and ordinances. Mr. Roger Brown's term expired in January 2020, and he has expressed interest in continuing to serve in his respective Swansboro category. Ms. Christina Asbury's term expired in January 2020 for the Stump Sound category. At this time, two individuals have expressed interest in serving in the category of Ms. Christina Asbury. One is Ms. Christina Asbury and one is Mr. Ricky Cannon. Ballots have been prepared for the board for convenience. And at this time, I'm going to take the ballots for the Stump Sound category. And Chairman Bright and Commissioners, Ms. Christina Asbury received two votes and Mr. Ricky Cannon received five votes. So Mr. Ricky Cannon has won the appointment for the three-year term expiring January 31, 2023 for Stump Sound. Again, these ballots are available for review if the public would like to review these. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment of Mr. Roger Brown for the Swansboro category and consider appointing Mr. Ricky Cannon as the representative for the Stump Sound category for a three-year term expiring on January 31, 2023.
Any motion?
So moved.
A second. Motion and a second by Commissioner Knapp. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to appoint these individuals signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Robin, I didn't see your hand. Okay. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item six, we didn't have anything that was moved to item six from the consent agenda. I will now turn it over to Ms. Sharon Russell for a manager's comment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I would like to start off tonight with giving an update on where we stand with our COVID-19 cases in Onslow County. Shortly before the meeting, we heard from our Public Health Director, Ms. Chrissy Richmond Hoover. We received one more positive result of COVID-19 today. That brings our total to 48 cases for all of Onslow County, including our municipalities and the base. We also have had 1,847 negative tests in all of Onslow County. At the current time, we have 153 pending tests. And of our 48 positive tests, we of course have had two fatalities and we have had 39 of our citizens who have recovered as of today. We would like to thank all of our employees and all of the folks in Onslow County who have worked so hard to serve people during this time and to protect the health of others. And we are deeply concerned about continuing to flatten the curve here in Onslow County and to keep everyone safe. Another concern that comes with COVID-19, of course, is the tremendous economic impact that we are all suffering. And we will be reviewing to see what the impact is on our revenue stream. We do anticipate that there will be and there will be impacts to our sales tax and property tax revenue. In addition, we've already seen impacts to some of our state funding and to the fees. One of our measures that we have put into place today under the leadership of this board is a hiring freeze in Onslow County. So I wanted to let the public know that as of today, there is a hiring freeze in Onslow County government. We will honor all offers that have been made and anyone who's already been scheduled for an interview and in that process. We will continue. But beyond that, with limited exception for law enforcement and a few other safety-related or critical positions, we will be freezing all hiring in Onslow County until we can determine what the economic impacts are and make sure we have a handle on that. We do this to take better care of the employees that we have now and to make sound financial decisions. My last comment for tonight is just to remind everybody who may be listening. Although we're all a bit distracted still and worried about COVID-19, it is very important to go ahead and fill out your census questionnaire. Please fill out the census forms. We don't want folks to have to go door-to-door to ask for these. It would put them at risk. So please go ahead and fill out your census. You can go online to census.gov. You don't have to have a special code. You can just put your address in and go from there. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for all of your encouragement and support during this time.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, for the report. And I do concur with you about getting people to finish and fill out the census. It's really easy to do online. If you can't do it online, you can mail it in or you can call a toll-free number and they'll help you with it. So I do encourage folks to get the census filled out and done. We'll now start with Commissioner comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Royce Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the reasons that I ran for county commissioner was because I did not like the direction that our country seemed to be going. Our great United States was built on the ideals of rugged individualism, self-reliance, limited government. Our forefathers braved sickness and adversity to settle our nation and fight for our freedom. When settlers moved west, there was no government to protect them, to compensate them or to regulate them. Our parents and grandparents started businesses, worked hard and saved their money and made better lives for themselves. But in the last generation, we've become more and more dependent on the government, and the government has grown to accommodate our dependency. Almost everything we do now is controlled by the government. You can't cut someone's hair or fingernails without permission of the government. You can't build a house or drive a car or work most jobs without some kind of government permit. Our schools can't teach what we want them to teach because of state and federal interference. This coronavirus pandemic has served to exemplify just how much of our freedom we've given away to the government. On March 27, Governor Roy Cooper told most of us that we cannot travel, we cannot work, we cannot visit our friends and relatives. His stay-at-home order follows no logic or common sense. It discriminates against small businesses and the poor. It sends our customers to giants like Walgreens and Amazon. And it tells us that we can't go, that we can go to the liquor store, but we can't go to church. Just a few weeks ago, I heard the governor of New Jersey, Phil Murphy, say that he didn't consider the Constitution when he ordered churches to close because he said, quote, "It was above my pay grade." Just this Saturday, I heard the governor of Nebraska, Governor Ricketts, say that soon he will, quote, "allow churches to open again." Made me wonder what has happened to It made me wonder what has happened to our country since when do American citizens allow the government to tell us how and when we can worship? These orders raise serious constitutional moral issues. Americans don't need to be told when to go to work, when to worship, or when to stay home. Americans don't need government bailouts, government handouts. Americans need to get back to their life. North Carolina is not New York. Onslow County is not Mecklenburg. Onslow County has a plan to safely and efficiently reopen our businesses. Losses of life from coronavirus are tragic. But we should also consider the losses of life that are due to suicides, and mental health, and substance abuse, homelessness, delayed medical procedures, and financial ruin that are plaguing our county due to this government overreach. If you're a small business owner and you've had to close down by the governor's executive order, I would encourage you to read Executive Order 121 carefully and look for exemptions that may apply to you, particularly Section 2, Paragraph C1, exempts businesses that can meet social distancing requirements. Maybe you could claim that exemption and get your business open again. I believe that what Governor Roy Cooper is doing to our state is unconstitutional, and you can be assured that I will do everything in my power to stop him and to reopen Onslow County. Thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
I just want to give a big thank you and a Commissioner Board shout-out to Ms. Wond because I don't know if folks realize the undertaking it is to get this off the road, all the technical difficulties they may run into getting all of us into the rooms to do what we're supposed to do to make sure everything's operating. So her workload has increased by getting all this put together along with Ms. Russell and her team. But there's been a couple of things since the last time you had us on Zoom into your living rooms. I saw the mayor of Chicago come out the other day and make the statement of, "We will arrest you." To me, that's alarming simply because I didn't stay home or whatever I chose to do that day because people were not equipped enough to make those decisions. Onslow County is not at that point. We have not, as the Board of Commissioners, Onslow County come out and added any restrictions above what Governor Cooper has placed. So there's no ability for us to do what some counties have done, is go back in and rescind orders. And we didn't because we didn't put any extras in place in the first place. So Onslow County has done a remarkable job of flattening the curve by simply following directives that come to us from the state. We didn't like them, but we're following them. But we're not going to go out there and chase you down and write you a ticket because you didn't follow the word from Raleigh. One thing I like about tonight's regional letter that hopefully we'll get to the governor's desk for him to consider is that Teddy Roosevelt said a long time ago, complaining about a problem without proposing a solution is whining. Well, our region, including Onslow County, is not whining, Mr. Governor. We're proposing a solution. We've got an idea. Let us run with it because we know what's best for our region and for our county. And I know some folks think that borders do not stop viruses. You are absolutely right. But common sense allows us to take care of that. And if we were allowed to do what we see as necessary, then we can take care of Onslow County because that's our priority. I'm not afraid of COVID-19. A lot of people are, and they should be because they are a part of the vulnerable population. But what scares me more than anything else is people that are picking up the phone to call in on their neighbor, to tell on their neighbor, and they've been encouraged to tell on their neighbor. And I've seen that nationwide, and that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen, having taught that era of the 1930s and 40s in European countries, in Eastern European countries. And we know how that turned out. Mr. Governor, trust us. Allow us to have our shop-safe policy along the lines that I read a couple of days ago. If we want to open or speak of opening, people jump to this conclusion that it's about the almighty dollar. But please understand that we're not putting anyone's life by the wayside. We're allowing people to make decisions, to use what's in their best interest. It's not political. We're talking about our neighbors. And I saw this written the other night, our friends, our friends that create jobs for the citizens of the county. And we need to respect that. We want to do the right thing. We'll do the right thing. Just make sure you allow us to do the right thing. Because as the DOJ has already put out there in a statement of interest, there is no pandemic exception to the Constitution or to the Bill of Rights. It's real simple, from President George H.W. Bush. We know what works. Freedom works. We know what's right. Freedom is right. Folks, read the executive order. File your exemption request. Do business until you find out otherwise. And as we want to close tonight, or I'll close tonight for myself, because Onslow County is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Let's keep it that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Foster. I will call on Commissioner Knapp to make comments.
Are you talking to me? Because I couldn't hear you.
Go ahead.
I've got a delay going on right now.
Go ahead. You up? You up?
I'm up. Okay. Just a couple of things. I'll be quite honest with you. I'm just I'm just over this. I'm tired, tired, and tired of the COVID-19 issue. I think a lot of you can understand my plight. You've been there's a lot of pressure. There's decisions that have to be made. And I echo the sentiments that we need to get our county reopened. Absolutely, because our businesses are suffering. But there's a flip side to me that also says that we need to stay cautious. And some people don't want me to use that word, but I'm going to use that word because we still have people affected by this particular disease. It's a no-win situation for the Commissioners because we're walking a tightrope. And if you don't think we've been walking a tightrope, live in my shoes for the last two months. It is the tightrope. And but I can see where the businesses are suffering. And to me, there's just some some flaws into what we're seeing out there. Certain things staying open and certain things not being open when certain things should be closed and certain things not being closed. So if you wanted my honest opinion, I'm just tired of it. And we're trying to do everything we can under the executive orders issued by Governor Cooper. But we can't sit there and and I know some of you may disagree to demand Governor Cooper do this and that. We're just going to ignore the executive order because that would bring chaos down to Onslow County and stricter sanctions against us if we do that. It's not that easy. And I want you to understand it. And I've talked to the Commissioners about that. We cannot sit here and just basically turn our backs to the executive order, which becomes state law. Okay? And I agree with the intent of the letter that we need to open up. We need to do it. But we need to get our businesses back on our feet. And I hear a lot of rhetoric out there about we should demand this, we should demand that, we should do this. No, we shouldn't. Okay? Because what will happen, in my personal opinion, is that Governor Cooper, and I don't agree with him, but Governor Cooper, again, like I said earlier, can issue mandates against us and stricter sanctions. And that's what bothers me about this. The other thing is, and I pray and I hope to God that we don't have a spike. I really mean that. I hope we don't have a spike in positive cases, and I hope it doesn't go it doesn't increase dramatically overnight, which there's a possibility it could. And I want people to understand, although I support the opening of our businesses and we need to continue forward, we need to be careful and cautious and be understanding that hopefully we'll get through this with a lot less casualties, with a lot less people getting sick, and a lot less deaths. That's my concern. That's Commissioner Robin Knapp's concern right now. And I think we'll be okay with that. So I appreciate the passionate speeches by the other Commissioners, and I agree with them to a certain point. But let's don't get passionate about one particular viewpoint and forget the other viewpoint. Okay? Because if you go down the street today, it's divided. And I get it. And as small businesses are concerned, my biggest fear is that the businesses that are closing because of COVID-19, 30% to 40% of them will not reopen. And I understand that, and that's tragic. And it's sad because people have worked their lives for their livelihood and for the businesses that they're in. So again, when I say tightrope, it is a tightrope, and we're walking a tightrope without a net. And I wish people would understand that, you know? So when you voice your opinion, everyone has a right to their opinion. But know that other people have a right to theirs as well. And we're doing the very best that we can as Commissioners. We're doing the very best to analyze all the information. We're doing the very best to make the right decisions. And we've got a leadership team in place that is trying to do that. And I guarantee you, every Commissioner that sits on this Board, especially me, are in daily contact with our County Manager and our admin staff and trying to figure out what's going on. So I'll leave you with that, and I want you guys to understand it that are watching out there in G10 or social media. We're going to keep monitoring the situation. It's unfortunate we have another positive test today. I mean, that saddens me because I would like to see it go down. But I think we're slowly making progress and we're moving forward. One thing I do want to say, though, is because of all this COVID-19, we've got some positives out of this in terms of some people that I think that we should be very proud of. If anybody knows Brenda Lakowski, she used to work with the Onslow County Sheriff's Department. Her husband, Ski, is what he's known as, a JPD retired. But on 20th of May of this year, their daughter Alexis Lakowski is graduating from the United States Coast Guard Academy. And I remember when she left about four years ago to go off to school. And that's a tremendous accomplishment by her. I mean, that's absolutely if I was her parents, I'd be extremely proud of her. And they have to do their graduation virtually. And so what I'm going to ask the Commissioners is I would like to see us do a letter congratulating her on her appointment as U.S. Coast Guard Ensign here on May 20. I think that would go over that would go over big time with her and her family. I mean, I think that's just one heck of an accomplishment for a young lady that was brought up in Onslow County and decided to pursue her career. And all I can say is congratulations, Alexis. You did great, and I know your parents are proud. So maybe we can sit down and talk sharing about this and see what we can come up with, but I think it would be a great idea. And the last thing I'll say to all the people out there is I want to thank you all for your patience. We're in trying times. And I just can, you know, I pray that everybody will continue to practice their social distancing because I think because of our practices, we've reduced the numbers here in Onslow County. And we need to keep focusing in on that and keep pursuing that avenue so that we can get past this thing and move on. So but thank you to the citizens of Onslow County, and I appreciate you guys. And we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Knapp. I will ask Commissioner Price for comments, sir.
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Russell for moving quickly to implement the wishes of the Board in regard to a hiring freeze. I think that's going to be a positive step as we deal with an anticipated loss of revenue. I think that only makes sense to go ahead and implement that ASAP. I appreciate you moving forward with that. Also, I'd like to say I understand the frustrations that businesspeople feel and that they're hurting out there, and the average worker is hurting. But we need to remember that this was implemented by the governor through emergency powers that were given him by the state legislature. If he was given that power by the state legislature, that power can be revoked by the state legislature. And so I call on the state legislature to revoke that power, those emergency powers given to the governor. You say, well, the governor is just going to veto that. Well, have our legislators go on record as to where they stand in regard, do they want a governor with these emergency powers that we feel like are not being dealt with fairly as it relates to Onslow County anyway? And so just want to remind you of that. From my perspective, the thing that the only thing that we could do would be to cancel the state of emergency. And that's something we've talked about, and I'm willing to do. But I'm just one voice. And so we go with the will of the Board. And so that's the situation we're in. So we're left with advocating to our state legislators and asking them to do the will of the people. And and as I move on, let me just say, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to express my appreciation for all the teachers out there who are working on their online courses. I can't imagine the frustration that I know I would feel if I had to do my lessons online. That wasn't my that wasn't me. I had a different style than that, let me put it that way. And so I would definitely be in a frustration zone right now if I had to do that. So I commend those educators who are daily working to put those lessons online, to reach those kids. You know, and thanking the parents who are pushing those kids to keep up with their schoolwork and that type of thing. And so we're remembering those teachers this week. And so we appreciate what you do and all the efforts you're putting in. Thank you. Have a good evening.
To Commissioner Price. I will now call on Commissioner Shanahan.
So I guess I'd say this. We're in a spot where we can't press a button that would end COVID-19. And we can't press a button that will lift the governor's restrictions. But that doesn't mean that we're sitting on our hands as a county. Our county staff have been working tirelessly to try to do good within the community through this crisis. They've been doing a fantastic job of that with thousands of meals being provided to citizens that are in a bad way, with county staff that are creating cloth masks for people to use to help protect themselves as they go out. And so we've been acting in a lot of positive ways, maybe not in the big flashy ways that we sometimes wish we could act, but in small but important and meaningful ways to help people on the ground level, which is what local government is ultimately about anyway. One of the ways that our county is acting right now is in putting together this budget. And along with putting together a budget, preparing for contingencies. Our legislative leaders said today in a press conference that they are expecting revenue shortfalls in the billions of dollars. That those shortfalls are going to trickle down to us. There's no two ways about it. And we're also going to see revenues from our property and sales taxes affected. You know, that's going to happen. And it's hard for us to measure and predict right now exactly what the scope of those impacts are going to be. And so one of the challenges that our staff have had and that they've risen to the occasion to address is that as we put together this budget, we have to prepare for unknowns and create contingencies on you know, we may approve spending on a certain thing and end up having to delay or delete that expenditure later on as the reality becomes clear. And so we're doing the hard work of making those plans and trying to keep the situation to be as positive as it can for our citizens and to make sure that the the pain doesn't trickle down to them as much as we can. And so we're going to continue to do that work. And I appreciate everybody who tuned into here. And I appreciate my fellow Commissioners for being with us, being with me tonight for us to come together and do these things. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Vice Chairman Buchanan.
There's quite a bit been said tonight. I kind of concur with quite a bit of that. The key thing here is thanking our staff, thanking our employees for the work that they have done. They've really worked hard, along with the staff. But the other thing, too, is we got to thank the citizens. They've been bearing with us pretty easily right now. I mean, we're catching a little bit of heat here and there with some of the small businesses, but we're reaching out as much as we can. This new letter, I hope that it does what it can do. I concur with some of the Commissioners when they say that the governor's done us wrong, which he has. But the thing about it is, like what Shanahan says, we've got to abide by what the rules are, and we have to abide by those rules. But right now, it's the biggest thing is to thanking our citizens for what they're doing and working with us. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I want to commend their staff for putting this virtual meeting together. It took a lot of work, a lot of hard choices to be made to make it happen. And a lot of seven people to eight people to put together and have a real good comprehensive meeting like we have. I do want to thank all of the applicants for the various boards that put in for those applications for serving. I want to congratulate the ones that got appointed and the ones that got reappointed. And I want to thank the ones that were appointed earlier and that were appointed earlier and have served our county very well. And I hope that they'll apply again for other boards. We have other boards that'll be available for them to apply for. I really thank them for stepping up to the plate because they really don't get paid to do it. So we, we have a lot of people that are volunteers that step up to the plate and help us. I want to commend or give my condolences, one, to our county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell. She came on to us two meetings ago. We swore her in and gave her an opportunity to serve as a county manager. Had she known what may be coming down the road with what she's facing now, she may have had a different idea about what she wanted to do. But just to give you a roadmap of what she's done, first of all, we had a very complicated budget that she was thrown into and working on to finish it and get it ready for mandated budget meeting, budget books and our budget approval becoming effective July 1 has to be mandated by law, a balanced budget come July 1. Well, she was thrown into that arena. And then not only was she thrown in that arena, we had coronavirus 19 that come along and sent her in another different direction. And I think we'll have her pretty well oriented to hurricane season that'll be coming up right around the corner. So she'll be real versed in Onslow County government by the end of this year. And I think she'll do a good job like she always has. I really, I'm really proud of her and what she's done for the Board. I don't think any Board member in here can say that she hasn't been a very strong asset for the county commissioners and helping us stay informed. And I really, I really appreciate her being there. And I appreciate Ms. Wond, her clerk to the Board and what she does to organize things and keep the meeting going and keep the agenda packages up to date and keeping us informed, as well as a lot of other staff members like our assistant county manager, Ms. Sherri Slater, that's here also. We've got a tremendous team. And I tell you, I would put them up against any team in North Carolina or any state or any county government because they got to be facing a tremendous amount of stress and challenges with what we're facing now. So we have a lot of different fronts. The coronavirus has put our businesses in a deep state of suppression. Some of them are closing. Some of them are not going to come back. And we have to not only look out for, try to look out for the businesses, we have to look out for the, we have to watch our economy. Our economy is another front that we're facing also. And we don't know what the sales tax is going to be. We don't know what the property tax is going to be producing this coming budget year. But we'll get through it. We're all in this together. And we're going to keep fighting until we can get back control. And we'll make adjustments as, as it happens. And I would say to our, to the viewing public, our county manager has a, if Plan A happens or don't happen, she's got Plan B. If Plan B don't happen, she's got Plan C. She's always got a strategic plan in place in case we have different contingencies. And I put a lot of trust and faith in her. And the citizens of this county should do the same thing. And I, I'm really proud to be here tonight. I did want to mention one thing about the coronavirus cases. We have 48 positive cases. And as Ms. Russell stated, we have 1,847 cases that come back negative. We have 153 cases that still pending. But out of the 48 positive cases that we had since the very start of this, we have 39 cases that people have recovered. So that really, if you want to know the real numbers, that really leaves us with nine, nine cases that we know of right now that's positive. So we only have nine people that are sick. I think we only have one person in the hospital if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. We did have two. And sadly, we did lose another person. We have two deaths as a result of what the coronavirus brought us. But other than that, I think our numbers really look good. If we, we had, one time, we had like 30-some cases and we didn't have like three or four recovered. But that recovery number is getting so broad now that it looks like people are really recovering a lot quicker than the ones that are tested positive. So I think those numbers, even though we have 48 positive cases, those numbers look really good to me. So I'm thinking and hoping that Governor Cooper, come the 8th of this, this month, which is next Friday, I hope he'll let us go ahead and start either opening up the county the way we, we feel like we can. And we have a lot of plans to do that. Or, or he goes ahead and opens up Phase 1 and maybe he can relax some of the orders that he had in Phase 1. I'm hoping that'll happen because the trajectory that they had set out, if it stays on course, it looks like their trajectory, even though we have a more positive case, it looks like those are still favorable in the going down. Our hospital is not inundated at all. Our hospital only has, as far as I know, one, one case of coronavirus being treated at our hospital. And that is, that surely is not overwhelmed our medical facility. I think we are really in good shape. I think we, we could, like Commissioner Knapp has stated, I think we could have a spike. But I still think that we are still in good shape. And the more, and you know, the more people that are tested, there's a possibility, the more deaths is going to come back positive. But if those people are not really, have, they may be asymptomatic. They may be positive, but may not have any effects of the virus at all. So I'm really, I'm really excited about our testing. I'm really excited about the number of cases. I think we've done well. And we could do well if we get in charge of it. But we just hope for the best and prepare for the worst. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, gentlemen. Have a motion by Commissioner Shanahan, a second by Commissioner Knapp. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
We are adjourned.